I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening for our first meeting of 2025. Can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzazka.
We do have a quorum this evening. Move into our first item for public participation tonight is the Mary and Bright Tree Decorations winners. Rosie?
Good evening. Once again, our community sponsors and partners showed up in December to help make Montgomery merry and bright. As I speak to you this evening, you will see on this screen the 2024 Festival of Trees participants and the creative works displayed both inside Village Hall and along River Street outdoors. We would like to thank all the groups who took the time to decorate and display a tree at this year's event. This year, we had 39 trees decorated, and we hope this continues to grow, and we have even more participants in 2025. As I announce the winners, if the groups are present, please join us and Village President Matt Brawley up in front to receive your award and take a quick picture. The Community Favorite Award goes to the top three indoor trees who received the most likes on Facebook. This year, our top three were very close. In third place, we have the Woodcrafters, Bazloo's, and Juan with 113 votes. And in first place, we have the Lakewood Elementary School Girl Scout Troop 202 with 137 votes. the Chamber Choice Award, and this year's Chamber Choice Award goes to Bellman Family Funeral Home and Cremation Services. If you would like to come up and receive your certificate? Thank you very much to all who participated and to those who attended the tree lighting and visits with Santa this year. We look forward to next year's event and hope our winners will be back to defend their titles. Thank you all very much, and now I invite our introduction of employees to come up.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I'm here to introduce two finance employees. So we're going to start with Clara, who's here tonight, as well as Linda. So Clara is our customer service specialist. She joins the finance team about two years ago. Before coming to the Village of Montgomery, Clara worked for 3M as the third shift trainer and warehouse operator, but she truly has embodied and become the voice of the finance department. So she's who our residents call and meet at the counter to either give her for her to give them resolution to their problems or take their payments. Clara does a phenomenal job helping our residents, but she also gives us an extra service as well with her ability to speak Spanish and provide those translation services for residents, not only with the finance department, but other departments as well, often helping community development with residents that have questions on permits and anything of that nature. So she lives in Oswego and with her husband and son and Jaden. Her son plays volleyball, so we get to hear of all of those great adventures. But in her spare time, she enjoys working on projects around home and helping her elderly neighbors. But Clara's been a really great addition to the finance team. And in addition, I'll move right into Linda. So Linda joined our finance team in May of this year. She previously worked for the villages of Sugar Grove and Oswego. She comes to us with 15 years of government experience. Linda has taken the position of our utility billing finance assistant, so she works on getting residents' water bills prepared on a monthly basis, as well as dealing with any issues and checking for discrepancies. She has a very keen eye for locating those billing errors, which help us with our non-revenue water loss, so that's amazing. But you may recognize both Linda and her husband Mike as they are also proud Montgomery residents and small business owners as well. So they own Dicky's Bait Shop just down the street. And I'm going to hand it over to Megan to introduce our next employee.
Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce Cindy Pantoja as the newest member of the administration team. Cindy started with the village on December 9th as the executive assistant and has been appointed as deputy clerk by Clerk Buchanan. Her responsibilities include records management and licensing, and this year, she was instrumental in completing our liquor license renewals. Cindy holds a degree in business administration, also executive accounting, and brings with her five years of administrative experience from the village of Bolingbrook. Her technical experience as a software support specialist for an ERP company has helped her to quickly learn the village's new ERP system. Additionally, she is fluent in Spanish and is able to assist
Christina?
in serving our Spanish-speaking residents and business owners. Cindy is married and
Thank you. Later this evening during items for separate action, the 2025-2029
has two daughters. One of them is here with her tonight, and we are thrilled to have her
strategic plan will be on the agenda for the board's consideration and approval. Throughout
as part of our team. So welcome to Cindy.
the meetings with staff during the planning process, much discussion focused on village branding, and more so, our residents' connection with the village. We don't have a Montgomery High School to rally around on Friday nights. We have five school districts, five fire districts, two counties, two park districts, and two library districts. And while these partners give us more champions in our corners, we would be naive not to understand that it further dilutes our ability to rally our residents around a brand. We aim to start from the beginning and tell the story of who we are in the We Are Montgomery. Montgomery has a rich history, which you will see in a video preview at a future meeting featuring Village Clerk Buchanan. We are a town with an entrepreneurial spirit, equal parts residents, industrial, and commercial, that we hope to capture in the upcoming videos. Our board talks frequently about staying ahead of the curve and planning for the future, Montgomery. Our upcoming water feature and our staff spotlight on social work planned for this spring will showcase your foresight. We have staff committed to our residents in providing the best possible services, which you will see reflected as We Are Montgomery will be the theme as we begin our budget process for fiscal year 2026. We have staff, elected officials, who were born here, went to schools where our youngest residents go today, furthered their education locally, either at Aurora University or Wabonzi Community College, bought or rented their first homes in our quaint downtown, and have continued to stay at Montgomery residents as their families have outgrown their starter homes and expanded with our village to our neighborhoods on the west side of Orchard. As we begin the year, we wanted to take a moment to share the first of several videos we have been curating along with our contracted videographer, Yam Media, to help tell our story and remind our residents that and others that there's a lot of great things going on here in Montgomery, Illinois, and a lot to be proud of in the 60538. After all, we are Montgomery. Give me one second so I can make sure this plays properly.
I grew up in Montgomery, not very far from the PD, so I've lived there since I was about five years old. Age five, I remember the MPD officers.
Just leave Armando up there.
I grew up in Montgomery, not very far from the PD, so I've lived there since I was about five years old. Age five, I remember the MPD officers driving by, and they always made it a point to stop and talk to me and show me the squad car, give me stickers. And even if they couldn't stop, I would always remember getting away from them. And to me, at five years old, they were my superheroes. I carried that through growing up, and I always said I wanted to be an officer, and I wanted specifically to be a Montgomery police officer so I could do the same thing and interact with the kids in the community and make a positive difference. We're not always the scary people that some people think we are. There's a lot of kids out there that don't have anyone fighting for them. There's, you know, certain situations and cases and calls that we go to where they don't have those, like I mentioned earlier, superheroes. And that is always something that I strive to be for these kids. One of the coolest things about Montgomery, about our village, is the fact that our village trustees are always working hard to try to improve our village and help us grow. And I think they always have the mindset of, let's make this a better place for everyone to live. My position right now is a detective with the Montgomery Police Department. I've been at MPD now for five years. My anniversary was on Monday.
So we hope you enjoyed the video. We do want to sincerely thank Detective Galanis for helping us share this first story and Principal.
This news is funded by viewers like you. Please support our work at democracynow.org.
And Principal Jen Brunel from Nicholson School is with us here tonight as well. She opened up her doors and her after-school program for us to film. And a big thank you to all of our officers who are brightening the days of our youngest residents with a wave, with a chalk design, with a Monty visit, with a high five, and so much more. And you guys are all indeed our superheroes. So thank you.
That was exceptional. Thank you. Is it weird to watch yourself on that?
A little bit.
A little bit, yeah. I thought maybe we were going to see outtakes at the end. I thought that would be fun. Maybe next time. Awesome. Well, thank you for coming. Thanks for bringing your family tonight. Thanks for all you do and the police officers that are here today to support you, to support the village, to support 60538. So thank you. You don't have to stick around for the whole meeting. Okay, we'll move on to Item D tonight is the River Run check presentations to the two entities that I'm not going to say until we announce them. Hello.
Each year, the River Run shares a portion of the proceeds with nonprofit organizations that play a vital role in our community. New this year, the River Run Committee selected the Illinois Concerns of Police Survivors, or Illinois COPS. And one of our strategic initiatives in the 2025-2029 plan is focused on investing in internal and external stakeholders of the village. Thirty-five members of our full-time staff are sworn law enforcement officers. That's 43%. These are the individuals who take an oath to selflessly serve and protect our residents, knowing this commitment comes with great risk. How about this for We Are Montgomery moment? This evening, we have Montgomery resident and secretary of the Illinois COPS with us, David Johnson. Illinois COPS is a nonprofit whose local chapter is located right here in Montgomery. They work to rebuild the shattered lives of survivors and coworkers affected by line-of-duty deaths of a law enforcement officer. They offer peer support to help survivors cope with their loss, including retreats in camps, raise public awareness for the risks and sacrifices of law enforcement. They offer training, reference materials, and guidance for agencies in our area and throughout the state of Illinois. We'd like to invite David up to the front at this time, along with our River Run Committee staff and Montgomery police officers that are in attendance tonight for the presentation of a $2,500 donation check to support their mission.
Chief, I can't see you. I gotta have you over here. There you go.
I just wanted to thank the Village of Montgomery. I've been a resident for 25 years. These funds go to, as was stated, go to help survivors with hands-on programs. Those programs get survivors to meet other survivors of their same, we talk about survivorship categories. So we get spouses with spouses, children with children, parents with parents, and they're able to talk to other survivors of the same categories and learn that they're not alone. They get counseling at those retreats, and it's very helpful for them so they can start that healing process. So thank you very much.
Moving along to our next check presentation, the River Run Committee wanted proceeds to be tied to not only those who represent the village, but what our run represents as well, the Fox River. If you have not participated in the River Run in the last 21 years, we strongly encourage you to do so in 2025. I promise you don't have to actually run. The route flanks the Fox River to the north, to Ashland, and to the south of Violet Patch Park. It is a great morning, but also reminds us of one of our greatest natural resources and benefits in Montgomery, the river. Founded in 1972, the Conservation Foundation is one of the region's oldest and largest nonprofit land and watershed conservation organizations dedicated to preserving and restoring open space, protecting rivers and watersheds, and promoting stewardship of the environment in northeastern Illinois. Not only does the Conservation Foundation work to protect rivers such as the Fox River, but it also offers community education as well. For the second year, they will host their Fox River Series. We actually have pamphlets here with us tonight if you would like more information about that. Last year, our forestry supervisor, Ed Faff, worked closely with the foundation in river and native Illinois plant education, and will be involved again in the series once again this year. As we continue to call out our We Are Montgomery moments, on the Conservation Foundation website, they commend the Village of Montgomery, sharing that the historic four-and-a-half-acre homestead of the Dixon Farm was spared by the wrecking ball by the forested village officials. The Dixon Maersch Farm was in the Dixon family for more than 150 years. The site was sold to the Conservation Foundation in 2006. A year prior to this purchase, the Conservation Foundation initiated Project Kendall Now, an intense land conservation effort specific to Kendall County. The foundation holds office space in the Dixon Maersch farmhouse, which allowed them to be part of the community and be part of the conservation where land use issues were concerned. With us this evening is Jessica Minow, the Kane and Kendall County Program Director for the Conservation Foundation. We'd like to invite Jessica up to the front at this time with our River Run Committee staff and public work staff in attendance this evening.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to take a moment to say thank you for thinking of us at this great event and supporting our partnership even further. As Rosie kindly pointed out, we are a local environmental organization working to protect land, water quality, and connect people to nature. But really, at the heart of that, that's for the quality of life of the people who live here, work here, and spend their time here. So we are very happy to be here tonight. The village has been a longtime partner for us, all the way back from preserving Dixon Maersch Farm, and honestly, even before that. Where my office is, I'm very thankful that my office is located in such a great community. And then beyond that, to the Village Arboretum Project, the Fox River Series, and we just continue to collaborate. We're very thankful to the Village of Montgomery Board and their staff for that continued collaboration. So thank you all for having us here tonight.
Amazing. Thank you. All right. Last item for public participation is the public comment period. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the board on any topic? Seeing nobody in the offices or in the building. Is there anybody online? All right. If you were here just for the fun stuff, the fun stuff is over. So you can go whenever you, whenever you see fit. Otherwise, it's an open meeting, and you can stick around. All right. Move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the December 9th Village Board meeting, accounts payable and summary report through December 30th, 2024, accounts payable and summary report for January 13th of 2025, the community development report for November of '24 and December of '24, and lastly, the water production report for December of '24. Motion, second. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzazka.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. That carries five to zero. Thank you. All right. Rolling on. Items for separate action. The first one, actually, the first two are the same item. Recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2024-018, amendment to the special use and related variations. This is the northeast corner of Alcott Road and Orchard. And then Item B is Ordinance 2112, granting an amendment to the special use. This is first reading. Go ahead.
You want a discussion?
Sure. Well, no, it's fine. We got a motion. This is on the recommendation. And a second. Go ahead.
Just for clarification purposes, this is only to accept the fact that the Plan Commission made a recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. I'll turn it over to staff. Do you have anything additional to add?
Did you want me to go through the report?
Yeah.
Okay. So in August of last year, a special use and six variations were approved on the property. The village's Unified Development Ordinance does provide for the expiration of special uses and variations that are not established in one year. There is an extension period built into the code, which is six months for variations and an additional year for special uses, because the extension to the timeframe for a site plan is part and parcel to that request that has been included here as well. The petitioner has requested that the timeframes for this particular project be waived indefinitely. The details regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion are further detailed in the report. But at the end of a lengthy discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was split, it was 3-3, to recommend extending the expiration date until December 31st, 2029, which would represent a five-year extension. Initially, that is what staff had deemed would be reasonable to have some sort of end date put on. However, during the Planning Commission discussion, the petitioner did indicate that they wanted an open-ended timeframe. They were truly seeking an open-ended timeframe with no expiration. So staff presented an additional option that would be having an open-ended timeframe so long as that was expressly tied to the site plan on the property, which, in staff's opinion, would then help prevent somebody else from coming in and building anything but what had previously been approved on the property. The ordinance has been drafted to provide the language for both alternatives. So it is written as option one and option two within the draft ordinance, and then the findings of fact have been adjusted, depending, again, if the board wanted to have some sort of timeframe on the extension, be it five years or any other timeframe that the board deemed appropriate, and/or if the board wanted to just leave the time extension open ended, then staff would recommend tying it to the site plan so that nobody else could just go on the site and build anything with those approvals. So option one, I'll go through in a little bit more detail. That would be that the provisions of the UDO regarding the expansion of the special use and variations and site plan is waived, provided that the property is developed in strict conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, and those were set forth in Exhibit D of the proposed ordinance, except with any minor deviations that would be approved by the Director of Community Development. And then option two, as I stated previously, would be that the ordinance, the approvals granted by that prior ordinance and the approved site plan would expire if a permit had not been obtained by December 31st, 2029. And then again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did have a split vote, 3-3, which would then trigger a supermajority vote of this board. So, staff presented an additional option that would be having an open-ended timeframe so long as that was expressly tied to the site plan on the property, which, in staff's opinion, would then help prevent somebody else from coming in and building anything but what had previously been approved on the property. The ordinance has been drafted to provide the language for both alternatives. So, it is written as Option 1 and Option 2 within the draft ordinance, and then the findings of fact have been adjusted, depending, again, if the board wanted to have some sort of timeframe on the extension, be it five years or any other timeframe that the board deemed appropriate, and/or if the board wanted to just leave the time extension open-ended, then staff would recommend tying it to the site plan so that nobody else could just go on the site and build anything with those approvals. So, Option 1, I'll go through it in a little bit more detail. That would be that the provisions of the UDO regarding the expansion of the special use and variations and site plan is waived, provided that the property is developed in strict conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, and those were set forth in Exhibit D of the proposed ordinance, except with any minor deviations that would be approved by the Director of Community Development. And then, Option 2, as I stated previously, would be that the ordinance, the approvals granted by that prior ordinance in the approved site plan would expire if a permit had not been obtained by December 31st, 2029. And then, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did have a split vote, 3-3, which would then trigger a supermajority vote of this board.
Okay. Cool. Is the petitioner here by chance? Perfect. Do you have comment that you'd like to make? Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I apologize if we have to bring this issue before you, but unfortunately, when we did the original request, we were not informed that this had a termination on it. It was only once we received the letter of approval on it. Our issue is that, right now, we are under an agreement with our current provider who gives warehouse services for us, and that agreement extends beyond the current one-year-plus extension date. But our overall concern is the fact we're having to look out in the future, not knowing when we'd be able to build this building. And the oddity of it for us is the fact that the property is currently zoned M1 industrial, light industrial. But in order to use it as an industrial building, we have to have a special use. And that is so that our trucks can be on the property and actually parking on the property or staying overnight on the property. It's a very difficult situation to put a group in, because we have an industrial building, but we can't have trucks on the property if we were to lose that special use approval. We understand that village does not want to have this open-ended use out there so that anyone can come in and build anything they want to build. We do not object to being tied to our site plan, but we do firmly believe that the peculiarity of having an industrial zoning that doesn't allow trucks is something that makes it very difficult on us as we look out to build. So, we would request that you would approve the option. I believe it's one that would allow an open-ended approval of these tied to our site plan.
If you could just state your name.
Oh, I apologize. Jerry Dawes.
All right, Jerry. Thank you. The notion that a special use, and we're looking at, I know staff is, and Sony's not here tonight. I know staff, at the end of last year, was looking at special uses as it relates to outdoor storage versus parking for an ongoing operation on-site. There's a difference there, I think. And I don't think our UDL really goes into that, because you could just store equipment and not have any sort of active use on-site. I think that's maybe, in my opinion, the bigger concern with that regulation, is that it's just parking lot, but that's not what you guys are doing here. So, the notion that a special use has an expiration date is not irregular in the area. It's something that I've dealt with in my day job a bunch, and I've done the same thing that you're requesting. I've gone to the body and asked for a waiver of that date to another date specific. I'm not saying I don't support this. I think waiving the date entirely is something I haven't been successful at doing in the past. But given the situation here, I'm not uncomfortable doing that. So, long as you're okay that this is the plan that you intend to build, as long as you intend to build that plan, the village isn't going to have any issue with that.
We do intend to build that plan.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions?
Just for clarification purposes, Option 1 is the indefinite extension. Option 2 is the limited? Okay.
And just, yeah.
Right, and the zoning allows trucks and truck traffic on the property. The special use is for storage. So, you know, you can pull trucks in, you can dock them, you can pull them away, you can set them out in the parking lot. The special use, and we've talked about this before, is for storage, right? So, that means several days, a week, a month, a year.
Well, naturally, we show trailer parking. In order for us to pull it away from our doors and park it out in that trailer, it requires a special use permit.
Yeah, and we've talked about that before, and Director App has said that's not the intent. And I understand we need to clean up the UDO, right? So, we don't have this problem in the future. But your request for outdoor storage is specifically for trailer and truck parking, correct?
Correct. That's correct. That's why our site plan only shows trailer parking for that purpose. It's not for storage or anything else.
And you have no intent to store anything else on the property?
We do not, no.
Like junk cars or mulch or radioactive materials or anything like that? Okay, gotcha.
The, and the reason for the extension, was it correct that the current building being used, there's a lease for that building that you cannot get out of?
No, we have a third-party provider that provides warehousing activities for us in the Midwest. Our company is called Restaurant Depot, and we provide wholesale food, equipment, uniforms, anything you can imagine related to restaurants, catering, institutional food service. And we have a third-party provider that does that now. Well, that agreement was coming up for renewal at the same time we were going through, actually, prior to us going through the zoning for these special uses and the variances. So, we were forced to extend it. Unfortunately, they knew we were about to build our own warehouse, and they forced us to a longer-term extension than we actually preferred. And so, we're boxed in right now as to when we could actually start that building physically. It is our intent to purchase the property and build the building per the approved site plan. Our real issue is we just don't know right now exactly when we would pull the trigger to build that.
So, is there a chance that this third-party provider, knowing what your intentions are, could provide a very lucrative contract extension financially that would maybe lure you to go that route rather than ever developing this parcel of property?
No, around the country, we're building our own distribution centers. Historically, we've been dependent on third-party providers throughout the country. We have 180 locations. We have completed three distribution centers right now. We have a fourth starting in April in New Jersey. This would be our fifth. So, our model is to move towards owned and managed distribution centers. We were just caught in a bit of a timing whipsaw on this one.
Okay. Perfect. Any question? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, is the, we've got a motion in a second on the recommendation of the planning commission.
Correct.
Any other comment on that? All right, will you call the roll?
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Przaska.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay. That carries five-zero. Thank you. And then, Ordinance 2112, that's Item B, is first reading, so we can't take action on it tonight. And we will add it to the next available meeting for approval with, as we discussed, no expiration of this special use, and then ties it to the site plan.
Correct.
Any objection?
Option 1.
I'm good.
Option 1.
Yeah, that's what that meant, then.
And we can't put that on consent with trustees Berlin gone, correct?
We usually don't.
Correct. Okay. Otherwise, I'm supportive of that if she was in support.
Perfect. All right, that'll be on in a future meeting. Thank you. All right. I guess, before we move on, just to get a little bit more clarity. If you haven't commented on this and you would like to make comments so that they have some certainty as to where you might sit on this, I think they might appreciate that before we move on. Sorry to put you in a spot, but just a straw poll.
Sure.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes for Option 1.
Yeah.
Option 1.
Option 1.
Option 1.
Sounds good. There you go. All right. But that, we can't take action tonight, so it'll be at a future meeting. I don't say the next meeting, just in case something happens and it gets bumped. But likely, the next one. All right, moving on to Items C and D. C is a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a special use and variance. This is for 1,000 Nell Road. And then, the enacting ordinance, 2113, granting the special use and related variations. This is also first reading. Laura?
Yep. The petitioner is requesting a special use for outdoor storage, which would allow the petitioner to store trailers within the already-existing outdoor storage area. There's no changes being proposed for the site. A special use for outdoor storage was previously granted for this property pursuant to Ordinance 1026. However, the use did cease active operations for a period of more than six months and has since expired. So, therefore, a new special use is needed to reestablish the use on the property. The requested variance would allow the screening that exists on-site to remain as-is. So, this includes a chain-link fence instead of the solid fence, and then the existing trees and shrubs that do provide screening but don't meet the UDO's current requirements. And there's also a lack of berms where otherwise would be required. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold the public hearing, and they voted 6-0 to recommend the approval of the special use and variation with the condition that when the existing fence does need to be replaced, that the property owner replaces the fence with a solid fence that meets the requirements of the UDO with regard to the outdoor storage screening. And I can take any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
None. Motion to approve?
Second. Or motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation?
Moved and seconded for the recommendation. Any comments on that? All right, call the roll.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Przaska.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries five-zero. Any comments or any objection to putting the ordinance on consent at a future meeting? If Teresa's all right with it? That's fine.
No.
Okay.
I'm okay with it, man.
I think I just heard.
I'm online. I'm okay with putting that one on consent.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's not participating. She's just commenting. Okay. All right, we'll move on to Item E tonight, is the adoption of the Village of Montgomery 2025-2029 Strategic Plan. Christina?
On October 28th, 2024, the meeting, at the meeting, staff presented the Strategic Plan 2025-2029 for your review. The year-long process culminated in expansive document featuring three guiding principles, six strategic initiatives, and a roadmap of various goals and objectives we, as a village, aim to accomplish over the next five years. Many of the tasks were developed and defined from the initial strategic planning launch in October of 2023. This evening, your leadership team comprised of staff from across all three facilities and all departments is present in hopes of your favorable support of this document. The staff is eager to begin working towards successfully completing the goals, objectives, and tasks set out in this plan, and has already begun incorporating many of these strategic initiatives into our budget process for fiscal year '26. As a reminder of the six strategic initiatives, we have focus on sustainability, ensuring professional governance, investing in internal and external stakeholders, promoting civic engagement, developing infrastructure, facilities, and resources, enhancing economic development. Thank you, Village Board, for reviewing this large document. Staff have put a great deal of time into combining your vision as a board with staff feedback and future forecasting to create a strategic plan we can all be extremely proud of. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I think I said this last time. I really appreciate the cross-department groups that we had or that staff put together to kind of build this thing, really get buy-in from everybody across, you know, three different buildings at different levels of the organization to kind of implement a plan and something to work towards over the next several years that the board has indicated that, you know, we support where we're going. This is the vision where we'd like to go, where the residents would like to go, and staff is going to take us there and complete all of them in five years. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I just, I have, I do have a couple, and I appreciate the employees working on this. I really do. It is a large document. I've had to read this several times just to digest it all. For comparison, the one that was done five years ago was only 11 pages long. So, this is, this is a much more comprehensive document. It's more from an administrative point of view, and this would be for Administrator Zofel. You know, years ago, we, as a board, decided that sustainability, or, look at here, I got a... Succession planning, I'm sorry. She said sustainability, I missed my, succession planning was very important to the board. I just want to clarify, in my mind, in my opinion, that succession planning, and I've witnessed this at the village, and I've been through this before, a previous employer of mine, succession planning is looking within and identifying employees that you feel can step up and take the position of somebody else. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the same department. I went through this with a previous employer where I was actually moved from another department, in the accounting department, and so that they could eventually move me up to a department head at that position. So, it was done within, within the company. I don't think, again, in my opinion, the succession planning means to go out and create more positions or hire more people to have them in place in case somebody does retire. I think it needs to be handled within. One of the other things I did notice in the document, and it took me a while before I really caught on to this, but it was more of, it was more of an exercise where people of the board, employees, and everybody were asked, if money was no object, what would the village do tomorrow? And that's almost two pages worth of suggestions. And then, if money became an issue, what would you eliminate or stop doing? And that was just a few items. But my concern with that is, is most of the items focused on reducing services to residents. And, you know, and I've said things like this before. I'm not going to vote no on a document or a plan just because of one small portion of that plan. But I think that that's just not a good message that we're sending out to our residents. And, you know, it's, you know, stop leaf collection or reduce leaf collection, sell the leaf collection equipment. You know, some of it was, you know, don't plow the streets, wait till after it was snowing, just reducing services to residents. And I don't want to see that happen at all. And then, the last thing is that it talks about the plan, and over the next five years, and this is pretty standard, it talks about with each budget cycle for the objectives laid out by the Village Board and leadership team within the plan. I just want to make sure that this five-year plan isn't taken as, you know, just a carte blanche, where down the road, someone's going to say, well, it's in a plan, that's why we did it. I want to make sure that the board is part of the, you know, five-year plan throughout the plan. And the final question I have is, has anybody looked at this, and again, this is for Administrator Zofel, has anybody really looked at this plan and said, well, we anticipate, if we do everything in the plan, it's going to cost X amount of dollars? And I bring that up because of what we just went through with the tax levy. And I don't want to, I don't want to get into a situation where we're making a five-year plan that we can't afford in the next five years to implement. So, has, do we look at the numbers budget-wise?
It costs without every item in there, but obviously, we will only do what we can afford to do.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be part of the budget each year. We'll be recommending, you know, some of the items to move us forward in the plan.
Okay. All right, so we don't necessarily have the money earmarked or set aside. We will, as we go along, every year through our broad budget process, look at the items on the plan and see if it's feasible for us to... Okay, perfect. That's all my questions.
Nice. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anything over here from the flannel side of the room?
I'd just like to thank, again, staff. And I heard, and I think I said this in the original meeting, I heard a lot of positive feedback from staff members related to meeting and working with people that they knew this person, but they didn't really know him. They knew who they were, but they didn't get a chance ever to really talk to him or interact. And I think there was a great value in that for the village and for this board, to have staff interacting, working with people. Because, again, over the years, as time goes by, people are going to elevate and become supervisors, and to have that knowledge and crossover is really critical. So, I really appreciate staff's approach in changing this, flipping the script a little. It used to just be us sitting on a Saturday doing stuff, and then that was it. This is not an 11-page document. It's a manifesto, so.
Is that a motion?
Did you need a motion to approve?
Sure.
So moved.
So moved. Second, third.
Yeah, motion by everyone, second by somebody else. Go ahead, call roll.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Przaska.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you.
You can't do them all.
Job well done. Appreciate it. And thank you, staff, for coming tonight as well. All right, moving on to Item F, Resolution 25-001, authorizing the reduction in performance security for 321 and 323. Clinton, Jeff?
Thank you. This is a duplex that was constructed at that address. Construction and the punch list have been completed. So, we are recommending reduction of $21,585.30. There would still be just under $1,500 remaining that is being held for the maintenance period of the landscaping. And then, if we could successfully get through that, then that would be released at that time. So, the recommendation is to release $21,585.30.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
Trusty Przaska.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Yes. Five to zero. Thank you. Rolling right into basically the same thing is Resolution 25-002, authorizing the acceptance of public improvements and bond release for gas and wash.
This is, as said, for gas and wash. Again, the construction and the punch list have been completed. In this instance, we have also gotten through the maintenance period for the landscaping and public improvements. So we are recommending releasing the full amount of the bond as well as accepting the public improvements.
I have a question. Is this related to just the gas and wash property? Does this not affect the property that was part of that? It was going to be a little strip, right?
Yeah.
That's separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Prasaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Nacarius five zero. Thank you. These type of things I, I have approved a lot in a lot of different communities. If, if these were on consent, I would not object in the future because they are pretty formulaic and that if they did the work, we should reduce the bond, but it's just something to think about in the future. All right. Ordinance H, or item H is Ordinance 2111, amending Section 1-10 of the Village Code of Ordinances regarding certain fines. This is waiver first, passage on second. Jeff?
Thank you. We currently have what we call type one and type two fines. Our type two currently, the fine is $25, and it goes up to $50 if not paid in time. And the type one are currently $50 and go up to $75 if not paid in time. Village did a survey of 12 communities, and, you know, based on that and discussions we've had here, we're recommending changes to those to be more in line. So we would recommend the type two, which were $25.50, going to $75.150. And then the type one, which were 50 up to 75, would go to 100 or 200 if they are unpaid. Additionally, staff was recommending moving some of the parking-related offenses to type one, which is the higher. So they would go from what has been $25 to $100. The biggest one would be the snow parking would then, would become a, a type one offense instead of a type two. So it would carry a little more weight if there was a fine for that. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
What fund do the fines go into?
Into the general fund.
Just general fund.
Do you know offhand the 12 communities?
I do not. I can find that out for you, though. I saw it, but I don't recall.
I'm assuming they're either proximity or also the comps that we used to use, that kind of thing. I think, and I don't object really to this, just the one thing to be cognizant of is that we are, I know we compare ourselves to 12 communities, make sure that they are similar communities in the financial ability of residents to actually pay, you know, fines like this. Because remember, the goal is compliance. If we're not getting compliance, we do things like this. Not so much as a revenue generator for the village.
Yep.
I see this primarily, and like parking during snow has been an issue. I feel that, I've been a board member for 12 years now, and I feel we've, we've gotten the message out there to residents. The $25 first offense fine, I've been told by some residents that my, my business feels it's less expensive to pay the fine than for me to move the vehicle or me to find another spot to put the vehicle. And so what this does is this allows, as board members, we get complaints from residents specifically about snow, and this person is not moving their vehicle, this person is parking in front of my mailbox, and that means that in front of my house is not getting plowed. This allows some more bite, and if it's $100 per first occurrence, and if not paid within a week, it goes to 200, I believe, that's enough to get you out of bed and to get, get your ass out there to move the vehicle. The other cost associated with that is that the cost for public works to have to go back and clean these spots up, sometimes days later when the vehicles are moved, and it's frozen, and it's much more difficult to remove. So the $25 wasn't even beginning to cover any costs associated with having to go back to, to clean these spots up. So had residents, and 98% of the residents in Montgomery adhere by these ordinances, and it's the other 2% which are causing issues. And they're causing issues not only for the village and, and costs related to, to public works additional time, but also there, there being a nuisance to their neighbors because they're not being a good neighbor. So I, I wholeheartedly support this.
Any other comments?
One question. When does it go into effect? Tomorrow? Tomorrow morning? Is there any delay period or?
EDS. There's the typical delay period on publication, and I have to, I'm sorry. I have to check the statute to see if there's any statutory delay period, but typically, there's a slight delay between when you pass it, when it becomes effective.
30 days or something like that.
10 minutes?
Not 10 minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Prasaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Nacarius five oh. Thank you. All right, item I, Resolution 25-003, accepting the donation of real property, the Blackberry Crossing West Homer Association Detention Ponds. Jeff?
Thank you. When the developer completed this project, they turned the basins over to the HOA and not the village. We have been maintaining them through the SSA this whole time, and will continue to do so. But the HOA requested that, you know, if we would take the property. And so they have approved it and signed the documents, and so we're bringing it to you.
This is not at all irregular because we own several, like my, I think my basins now are owned by the village, or if not, I'd like them to be.
Yep, we own several.
Perfect.
So.
I appreciate the village taking ownership of these and this.
This is with, by, by request of the HOA, so there, that HOA is all on board with this?
They've already approved it and signed the documents.
Okay.
So Blackberry Crossing West, is that, that's along Concord over by?
Dan subdivision.
He could tell you right where it's at. Okay.
So it's the basin that's on Concord and Gordon.
Okay.
And then there's basin on, I think it's Trune. And then there's one west off of Dixon. You can't really see it from the roadway. So there's three. So Blackberry Crossing West is basically west of Simon to Dixon Road. And north of Concord, a little bit south of Concord.
Those, those are the big basins to the south of Concord, correct?
Yes. Yeah, that one big basin.
Yeah.
The, could somebody send the, the map, Exhibit B, when it's available, just to the board?
So moved. Second. Go ahead, man.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Prasaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Nacarius five to zero. Thank you. All right, item J, award of a contract to Area Ara Valdivia Contractors in the amount of $486,200 for the groundwater storage tank rehab. Mark, or not Mark, Chris, whoever's looking at me.
Thank you, President Brawley. The ground storage tank in front of Public Works is in need of a full blast and repaint, so we advertised bids and opened bids, and had five bidders. We are recommending award to Ara Valdivia Contractors in the amount of $486,200, which includes base bid plus alternate bid. And Village has worked with them before, and they've done satisfactory work, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
What work did they do for us before?
They painted the Mill Street Bridge, and they've also done work at the Lime Southname Plant.
They were the ones that did the rehab, right?
Yeah, like 15, however many years ago.
That was a huge project, yeah. They did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is 46.02% under engineer's estimate?
Correct.
They're not missing anything?
No, so.
It is a qualified bid and?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's nice. There's some comparative bids close to them. I think, you know, when we're putting our estimates together, we're looking at our past projects. This site was a little unique, and the feedback that we got when we had our pre-bid meeting was, due to how open the site is and how much room there is from the work, there's very little neighbors that they're going to have to deal with, specifically no residents that they have to deal with. And then we as staff talked about trying to leave the timeline as open as possible. So the way that the spec is written is that they have until October to complete it, but once they start, they, the ground storage tank can only be down for 90 days. So by allowing that flexibility for the contractors, it allows them to fit their schedule the best, which usually tries to get the village the lowest, you know, best price. And going out when we did, everyone's looking to try and get jobs for the year at that time.
So we're saving $414,000?
Correct.
That helps keep your water bill down.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Okay. So moved.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Prasaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Nacarius five zero. Thank you. All right, last item for separate action is an agreement for professional consulting engineering services with EI. Really an update of their current agreement. Jeff?
Correct. As it says in the cover sheet, this has not been updated since 2008. They have requested a change to the monthly retainer. It has been $2,500. They're requesting a change to $3,000. This covers them attending meetings, village board meeting, PCC, our staff and DRT meetings, Kane Kendall Council of Mayors, they attend on our behalf. So this is just sort of a monthly retainer for all of those things like that that they do.
Perfect. Comments or questions? I can't articulate how valuable this is, and I'm not in all the meetings that you're in, to have our engineer at the table with all of these conversations. I work in so many other municipalities where their engineering consultants not really in those meetings, and so they're not as connected. They don't exactly know what the village's goals are, what the goals of the village board are, and thus, I know it's not as efficient. It certainly isn't efficient for a developer. So I can't, can't state enough how much I appreciate that. Kane Kendall Council of Mayors is not like, that's a working meeting that we get funding from, so it's not like a networking meeting or anything like that. So I really appreciate the work they do. Looking forward to it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Prasaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Nacarius five zero. Thank you. All right, I'm moving in. Item for discussion, if you guys don't object, I'd like to do the second one first. First one, second? All right.
Yeah, it's fine.
So the first one we'll do is item B, Montgomery Development Fund Policy Review. Patrick?
Thank you, President Brawley. Recently, staff has received feedback from recent applicants from the three MDF, Montgomery Development Fund programs that we've had. And also, in order to better align the, the programs with the now adopted strategic plan, staff has been reviewing the, the three programs. We've made some additions to it. We've clarified some of the issues, and we've just tried to update it. So what I'd like to do is review all three programs and then explain, you know, the proposed changes that, that staff is making. The, the first program is the forgivable loan program, and that's for any retail or, or commercial business. It's really a facade program. It's used for exterior lighting, awnings, signage, door replacement, window replacement. And the, the refund amount was, was $10,000, but the board just recently increased that to $20,000. And one of the issues is that each applicant has to remain in business for at least three years. And the, the process for this is that the application is reviewed by the Montgomery Development Fund Committee, and then its recommendation goes to the, the village board. And then the application fee for this is $250. The changes or proposed changes that staff is recommending is changing the name of this program to the Montgomery Commercial Improvement Program. And in addition to allowing for exterior improvements, we're recommending that the program would also help reimburse for interior improvements for commercial tenants to make them ready for a new commercial use. And then we, we'd also like to change this to a reimbursement program so that after the project has been completed, the applicant would be reimbursed on a dollar-for-dollar basis up to $20,000. So if the total project was $30,000, after the project is completed, the applicant would receive $15,000. We'd also, you know, continue that, the, the business would have to stay continually, continually operating for three years. One thing we'd like to change with the process is, you know, based on feedback we've gotten from some of the recent applicants, is that it would continue to go to the Montgomery Development Fund Committee for review. But then their recommendation would, would be the final step. It would not actually go to the village board. Trustee Marisak is, is on, on the committee. We feel as though that, you know, he could remain the eyes and ears for the full board. And also, if we went this way, we would, staff would actually have to, every budget during the budget cycle would be requesting funding just for this specific program. And then I'll also continue to keep the, the board up to date in the weekly notes. And then we'd also keep this one, the application fee, at $250. So this program has the most changes. The other two aren't nearly as, as, as long. The second program is the Downtown Mill District Incentive Grant Program.
Do you, do you want questions on the first one?
However, however, the board would like to do it.
I just have one question. There's a map in the back of this. For, it's only for this specific one, right?
Correct.
So if you're one of the yellow parcels, you can apply. If you happen to be like next to one of these, you're not eligible.
Yeah, these are all the commercial parcels that we have.
I kind of figured that when I was looking at it. Okay. You don't think that that would create any issue where somebody immediately adjacent to this downtown that wanted a reason, I, I, I'm sure it's endless, but you feel like this would be more helpful to you than leaving it more open-ended?
There was a map, or there is a map to the current program, and it was basically all of our retail corridors.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. That works. I, I see some areas on here and think the 20,000 might make, might not make that huge of an impact. Let's say on a new retail center that's going in on Orchard Road, let's say. But if you look at like the Douglas Road Corridor or downtown, I think that that amount can be really impactful. So that works.
And, you know, this program's really for a, a, a space that may just been vacant, and, you know, there's a, perhaps a restaurant that wants to go into it. And, you know, they need new signage. It wasn't a restaurant before. They need to put a kitchen in there. Any sort of interior rehab, really larger projects. There is the low-interest loan program that, that could handle something larger.
Okay. Any other questions on the first one?
My, my initial response to having this, the decision be with the Montgomery Development Fund is no. Not going to happen. I'm not going to vote for that. And it's not because of?
I absolutely agree with you, Steve. That was my reaction as well. I'd rather have it come to the board.
Hey, Teresa, I value your opinion, but legally, you can't participate in the discussion.
Oh, I thought I just couldn't vote.
No, negative.
Okay, I'll go back on mute. Apologies.
Don't worry, T. I got your back. But my, my response there is no, and like I said, nothing against Doug. I think if we're dispersing funds from a, a fund or something associated with the village, I think it needs to be the village board.
I, and I, no offense, I appreciate staff's confidence in my abilities, but I, I'm in a complete agreement that that's a, that's a board decision, that at that point, we're dispersing taxpayer funds, and we're talking about budgeting funds for this now, that it's within staff's allowable spend. But I think that, that needs to be a board decision to release the funds. The board needs to be involved in that process.
And, and I applaud staff for trying to streamline it.
Yes.
It's like we always talk about with the tax levy too. It's staff's job to do, to do what they can. It's his job to try and push the envelope a little bit one way, and that's fine. That part won't be included.
And to clarify, I don't know of any development fund approval that the village board has not approved. So I, I think we're all on the same page, but I, I would like to see that come before the board.
I, I agree. I would just go one step further if.
If, if there was one that we, that was not approved, and it was because of the M D F committee, I wouldn't want a business owner saying, well, yeah, they didn't approve it because they don't like me, right? I, I think it needs to come before the board, be vetted and voted on by the board. And I, and I agree with Steve, I've never known when we haven't approved, that we haven't been able to work out something.
Yeah.
And the rest of it, obviously, we, we vote for the twenty, I'm good with that. The interior space, I'm good, the name change, I'm good. And what's the elimination of the loan documentation?
So currently, all the programs have, there are four loan documents. There's the loan agreement, a promissory note, personal guarantee, and a security agreement. And for this program, we thought, you know, it was small enough to eliminate those in order to again, you know, streamline the process and keep the application fee at the two hundred and fifty dollars.
So are those documents something we will not require if, if they don't stay, if the business is not open for the prerequisite time and we have to do a clawback on the money? There's a clawback provision in this one also, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's the, the rub with that. If we don't have any loan documents, there would be no clawback.
So then there, there's no requirement to be in business for three years because there's no retribution? We can't go back after them? I don't.
Anything?
No, I mean, we would always recommend some sort of documentation if you're seeking, I mean, again, it's the risk balancing. So if you want to streamline and you're comfortable with the fact that you might not be able to get the money back, then, you know, that would be one thing. If the village does want to seek recoupment of possible funds, if they don't meet terms or if you want to impose terms, then we would recommend that there's some sort of documentation, although it might not need to be as complicated as it currently is. Typically, we would always recommend having something in place.
So walk me through, I know that you've probably had concerns from folks about the loan documentation. I know that it's pretty cumbersome. They do, we, we do a pretty deep look into things. For, if you're making a big investment, like millions of dollars, this is on the smaller end of that. Also, I believe can get in the way of your actual construction loan on the property. I don't know a whole lot about that kind of stuff, but I know that it's just another loan document that shows out there and it's maybe in a position higher than your other loan and it kind of screws things. So what other avenues might we have that you've thought about that we could have some teeth, if it's not as laborious as that? Or maybe just challenge you to think about it?
Yeah, I mean, we could do the, the personal guarantee.
But we got pushback on that for sure. Yeah, for this.
I'm in favor of streamlining the, the documentation process but not eliminating it. I agree with our attorney that we need to have something in place should, should we have some sort of issue.
Or something that maybe is less.
Yeah, and, I mean, just generally speaking, the simpler the document, the less recourse you're likely going to have. You know, the more complicated documents typically do give you the most recourse. So again, that's a policy decision of the board of what your risk tolerance is.
And I mean, there are, there are other, we're going to get to them, loan programs. Wasn't this smaller dollar amount initially ten thousand, we upped it to twenty, more of a, a grant type of situation where with a grant, we're not looking for paybacks and financials and, and loans?
It is a conditional grant, though.
But, but it's a grant nonetheless, so.
Maybe not legally, but in our mindset, it was, we're granting you this money. We just want you to stay in business, we want you to stay operational here in Montgomery. That was where my head was at on it?
Okay, correct, but again, it's not a, a loan. We have other programs, if we want to push them to a loan, well, we have two other loan programs. So I think the, the goodwill intention of this grant program is kind of moving and morphing into another category by the sounds of it.
And, yes, and also.
And tying it to a, a three-year timeframe as well for, for a grant, I, I mean, future is, is unpredictable.
Well, especially for this, what we're talking about twenty thousand dollars, we're talking about windows, doors, roofs, physical things that improve an existing building in town. Benefit is felt, day one.
If the business, if the business, but if the business fails.
They're not taking the doors.
That investment is still there, it's still in Montgomery, it's still in this downtown area, so it's still a win for the village. So I'm really, on this particular program, I don't like the way that it's becoming a little bit more stringent to apply and it's becoming more of a, a loan.
And I think it would be.
Just in terminology.
Well, that's, it was originally, that's what it was, a forgivable loan program. So we're actually going down to only one loan program now.
Right.
Because the second one is a grant program.
But then there's the downtown hospitality forgivable loan, and then there's the low, low-interest loan we have to come to as well.
So the last thing I would say about this one specifically is it'll be incumbent upon the M D F and this village board to analyze that applicant specifically. I mean, if, we've, we've been able to sniff things out before where it's like something doesn't really add up with this applicant. I think that's our time to know. I don't know how much time we're spending on legal and loan agreements and personal guarantees for this level. I want our businesses to see this, especially Douglas Road Corridor here downtown, to, like, we've seen. Pull the trigger on it, we're going to match you dollar-for-dollar up to twenty thousand dollars to improve our downtown. So I'm, I'm less concerned about the, the loan documents for that than, than on the other ones. Two hundred thousand dollars, I think it's a must.
The other programs we're recommending increasing the application fee from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. We kept this first one at two fifty because we're eliminating the loan documents. If, if we are going to be having some loan documents, I, I think we would like to increase that fee to five hundred for the, the Montgomery Commercial Improvement Program.
So why do we charge a fee? For staff time?
Uh, well, the loan documents take time, and then there is staff time involved.
I, I've never liked the, I've never liked the fee because we're, we're asking people to invest in Montgomery. And yes, it's, it's a program, right, that we're giving them money. And by the way, you need to pay us a fee to, to handle your documentation, in which, you know, the, the fee, half the fee is going to come out of the money we give them anyway, if not all the fee.
Sure.
Right, so, I mean, staff time is staff time, whether if they're working on this or, or working on something else. So it's not like it's actually costing us money out of pocket. But that's just, that's just my opinion.
Who's going over the financials and the documents and the tax returns?
Staff.
Staff, yeah.
So it's staff, so we're not hiring any other outside entity or a financial institution to.
We probably have an attorney involved in the loan agreement, which the five hundred probably doesn't, it depends how many hours it is, but realistically, it's probably not covering your full costs for the attorney time. I totally get that, I almost think that if, there's got to be some barrier, some threshold to entry. Frankly, like, you got to put just a little bit of effort into this, an application and a fee. If the project, if the grant gets approved, your fee is waived, that feels weird to say that out loud, but just something to think about that, especially for this initial one, the two fifty even. Actually, I don't have a problem with the two fifty. I think that shows that they have a commitment in this, and basically, when they get it approved, they get a hundred and twenty-five back.
I, I agree with President Brawley, the, the two fifty is fine. And I would say if it does get approved, waive the fee, waive the two fifty. Because Trustee Guyer is correct, it's going to come out. We're, we're asking them to invest, but then we're asking them to pay. Yeah.
And our goal is, we want you to make a complete, full application for a good project that's going to get approved. If that's the case, then the fee doesn't matter.
If that extra two hundred and fifty dollars goes back into, to another window or something, great, you know? And I just replace windows in my house, it doesn't cover the cost of a window, but part of it.
Okay, the second one, you were talking about the second.
Yeah, yeah, the second program is the Downtown Mill District Incentive Grant Program. And that's to attract restaurants and hospitality users to the downtown. The grant for this one is up to two hundred thousand dollars. They have to continue to operate for at least three years, and there is a prorata clawback there. The process is that it does go to the M D F committee, and then its recommendation goes to the village board. Application fee for this one is two hundred and fifty dollars. The proposed changes are, we'd like to rename it to the Downtown Hospitality Forgivable Loan Program. And instead of continuously operating for three years, we're suggesting that they have to stay in business for at least five years. And then this would also be a reimbursement program. The loan would be distributed after the certificate of occupancy permit has been issued. And we're requesting that the application fee be raised to five hundred dollars. And the third program is the low-interest loan program. And this is really that traditional loan program. Any commercial or manufacturing user can, can apply. The amount of the loan is, is based on the jobs created and/or retained. Eligible uses could be land acquisition, site prep, fixed assets, working capital. They also have to continue to operate for at least five years. Process is, it goes through the M D F committee and then to the village board. The application fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. For this one, the feedback we got was just that the loan application was very convoluted and, and complicated. Staff spent most of its time clarifying the loan, loan requirements for this one. And we're recommending that the application fee be raised from two hundred and fifty dollars to, to five hundred dollars. All three of these programs, moving forward, will be subject to the prevailing wage requirements. And based on the feedback we received tonight, you know, this would replace all the current applications, guidelines, and, and criteria.
Why, why is it, why is it dictated by the prevailing wage requirements?
That is a recommendation of our council.
Yes, when the program was implemented back in two thousand and seventeen, the guidance was not definitive. However, since that time, we believe that current case law and everything that we're seeing would indicate that prevailing wage needs to be required because it is public funds.
Yeah, and I, I deal in that realm every day. The, the original monies that created these funds came from where the state?
C D V G program.
I, I get it, but then I also, you know, if I'm, if I'm doing a project in Montgomery and if I want to use a local person that may, well, I guess prevailing wage, you can be union or non-union, it doesn't matter. As long as you're paying now, okay. Then if you get into the prevailing wage, are you getting into certified payroll and all of those things? Are they, they going to have to provide that type of documentation?
They have to provide it to the state, it doesn't go to the village any longer.
Okay.
But also make sure that, that is clear on the application, because some folks maybe have some heartburn over that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We'd like them to know that initially.
It, it increases your, your project costs by twenty to twenty-five percent, which means that they're going to want to borrow more because of the increased labor costs. And if you're not familiar with the certified payroll process and, and all of that, it's, it can be, the first couple are very cumbersome, right? And they're, they're, and you've got to do certified payroll even when you don't have guys on site. And so there's, there's going to be staff time, or, or, you said the state deals with it?
It was about two years ago, I believe, that they changed that the payroll doesn't get submitted directly to the municipality any longer, it gets submitted directly to the state.
Okay.
So this twenty thousand will become fifteen thousand. So instead of somebody potentially being able to do twenty thousand dollars worth of work, if they have to go with prevailing wage, then it could, could be fifteen.
They'll be able to do a project with sixteen to seventeen thousand, with prevailing, it's twenty. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy about that either. I, I just.
Right, but the funds that we got.
And, and that's if, and that's not, because I, I always, I always thought that that was if we got state or federal funds. If we used our own funds, we still have to do prevailing wage?
It's public funds.
Any public funds, no matter what the source.
Federal funds are Davis Bacon wages. And the, the way, like, my guys work is we have a regular union wage, right? And Davis Bacon wages, which are VA hospitals and federal projects, the, the Davis Bacon wages are actually less than what my union guys make. So when we're on those types of projects, we pay regular union wages. But when we get into Capital Development Board and Chicago Public Schools or schools and, and those things, it becomes what's called Illinois State Prevailing Wage. And that increases the labor rates for my guys and, and like four or five other trades. I'm trying to get, what was my point, I forgot what my point was for this.
Said Davis Bacon.
It, oh, and so there, there are projects that you're seeing, like TIF funds and those sorts of things, when they, they creep into private work, it, it might be a private development, but even if there's one, one dollar of state money, that makes the whole thing prevailing wage, right? And so developers are, they're going to have to, and just like these people applying for these loans are going to have to weigh the, the balance of, okay, I have a twenty thousand dollar project out of my own pocket, or if I accept these funds, it's now a twenty-four thousand dollar project, but I'm, I'm potentially getting some, some funds to cover that. That's the game that's prevailing wage.
This is.
Why, why are you guys laughing?
Well, they have to know about it upfront, right? Because if they've already gone out and gotten a bid.
Right, yeah.
You know, if George went out and got a bid to re-site his building, and then he comes in and applies for the loan and find out that all of his bids are no good. It's not twenty thousand, it's twenty-five thousand. Kind of needed to know that before, ahead of time, before he started getting bids to figure out what the project was going to cost.
Right.
Yeah, it's, they're, whoever does this, well, they're going to have to know the information prior to, because you're right, if they go out and they get bids, it's going to have to be in the documentation. And if they go out and get bids and they say, oh, this is a thirty thousand dollar project, I may not be able to cover this cost, and then they start to investigate other avenues of funding, then they're going to have to go out and get bids again that are, are prevailing wage.
There's no distinction between doing work in public right-of-way versus doing work on private property with government funds?
Yeah, this was an issue that there was less clarity a couple of years ago when we first looked. However, just looking at the totality of everything that's come down with how the analysis has gone with public funds, it isn't just right-of-way, and it's been applied far more broadly. Again, I don't have something specific with this program, but the application generally with how they've applied it would fit to this program.
Yeah, and I was, because I was thinking through examples at work where we do, we get reimbursed from municipalities for partial waterman extension or various things, and we have to pay prevailing, prevailing wage, but that's also, you know, for a public infrastructure, not so much private stuff. But at any rate.
I, I had a project down in the city that was eight hundred thousand dollars, and they had already let a majority of the contracts, and then they decided that they were going to accept TIF funding. Well, then that changed all of the contracts, it was a two hundred thousand dollar add to our contract. So that's, that's what they're going to have to weigh.
So is this, so is this for the entire project? Let's say someone comes in, they say, I, I need twenty thousand dollars because I'm doing these, these upgrades, and the electrical portion of the upgrade is going to be like twenty thousand dollars, but they were going to do some other, some other things. So it's, it's not, it's not the. So it's not, it's not the entire project, right? It's just what they spend the money on. You know what I'm saying? So if they had, if they had, well, I guess it wouldn't matter if they're going to spend just that 20. Because even if they split it up, it's still the same. I'm just trying to figure out.
I think whatever would be in the application that they'd be applying for.
Yeah. And I get prevailing wage, but, you know, and sometimes, you know, when we installed well 15, there was a lot of work at the time. I remember the electrical contractor who won the award, he had to bring somebody up from Southern Illinois. And I went out and I met the guy, and he was complaining, I'm up here, I'm away from my family, you know, and I'm going to be here for four weeks, and he got his first paycheck. He's like, man, I wish this job was all summer long. He goes, I'm making a lot more money, almost double what I make in Southern Illinois being up here. So I, you know, I get it, they're trying to protect the salaries of people in the area, you know? But sometimes it pulls further than that. It's just, yeah.
All right.
It's one of those things we have to live with, I guess.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Patrick, I appreciate it. Does this give you kind of enough direction when you start redrafting the three?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, perfect. Does anybody need, I just want to wait for Steve to tell a joke or something?
Yeah, let me set the bathroom real quick, can I?
Go ahead.
Well, I didn't know there was going to be a break.
It's not an official break. Future meetings, committee, the whole meeting has been canceled. Intergovernmental will be Monday, the 27th, along with Village Board meeting at 7:00. Is there anything new or unfinished that anybody would like to offer out?
Get ready to sponsor your police department for polar plunge.
Got it.
You plunging this year, chief? I'm putting you on the spot. He's a good cheerleader.
The video presentation earlier was fantastic. Ms. Nimitz.
All right. So we'll move on to our last item for discussion tonight is the Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District Funding Request. Jeff?
All right. I'm just going to run through the timeline and then turn it over to you guys. I received the initial request, I received it from trustee Marisak. I then submitted it to our TIF attorney for review. She responded, in her opinion, it was not a TIF-eligible expense, so I shared that information with trustee Marisak. I then met with Chief Myers to discuss it with him, besides informing him of her opinion. I shared information about a grant through the state fire marshal's office that Director Maluski had found for fire equipment. I also suggested he may want to reach out to state legislators, since we had had luck receiving funding in that, in that manner. When he said he didn't really have contacts with the legislators, I offered to do that for him. So I spoke with Representative Hanson, and I know they have connected. And I also sent Chief Myers information from Representative Kiffewitt about a community grant program that she had. I then received a request from a trustee to place this item on the agenda for discussion. And that brings us to now.
So a couple of things that I'll state is that I don't think anybody in this room is, I wasn't going to say qualified, but I don't think anybody in this room is qualified to say whether or not the equipment that he's asking for is a necessity, right? I'm not debating that at all. I hope and want him, in all of our fire districts, to have the equipment they need. The most important thing for me is that we find a way that he can obtain this equipment. He asked us last year through One Avenue, and our TIF attorney said that it's not legal to do that. And so we reported that back to him. Since that time, I know that that was several months ago, but since that time, I know that he's talked with the state rep. I talked to our state rep again today, twice, looking for avenues for this, because my biggest concern is that our attorney's saying we cannot do this. It is improper to do it. But let's try and find a way where that money does exist. And so the state fire marshal does have a program. I know trustee Brzaska just cold-called him to ask questions about that, not to speak for you. But Matt Hanson has been calling down there as well. The last grant cycle expired last year, at the end of '24, or somewhere in '24, but he knows that there is one coming up again, they'll do it every year, in 2025. In my opinion, if we've already paid for those tax dollars, all of us in this room, to the state of Illinois, let's go get that money to fund this, as opposed to doing something either in our TIF, which is inappropriate, or through our general fund, which I think all of us have a lot of other heartburn over things like that. Jeff and I and some of the trustees have been in Springfield to lobby Springfield for certain agenda items. On Metro West's agenda, multiple years, has been for the state not to mess with TIF. TIF is probably one of our most proactive and helpful economic development tools that we have at our ready. And this is the, I'm afraid that this is the type of example that other taxing bodies would use as to why TIF is not appropriate anymore, because people are taking funds out of the TIF when legally they shouldn't. So we have, we have two options, three really, is, I mean, help our fire district try and find that money in another bucket somewhere that we've all paid for. Two, rebate a large sum of money back to all of our districts. So one thing that I had Jeff look up was, this, literally like next month, we're going to rebate $36,000, $38,000 back to the fire district. That goes a long way to fulfilling that ask to get that. That's the background growth that we promised all of our districts with the TIF. That goes more than 50% of the way to get to the total. Or we can rebate their portion plus everybody else's, which I think is, I don't know how much, $800,000 or something. That's one option. Two is, we can just give money from our general fund, and that is not illegal, and we can debate that. Or three is, like I said, go help them find the money. So that's a lot of thought to put into it.
You could apply for the grant program.
What's that?
You could apply through the grant program.
He's got to pay prevailing wage, though.
Yeah, we just got to color-code his building, and then it's allowable. So that's my big picture on this. I know that lots of people have had lots of conversations on this. This is your time. Love to hear your opinion.
So I wasn't on the board, but I did, I went back and I watched the meetings online. And our attorney at the time was Steve Anderson. And I know a lot of the board members that were on the timer sitting here tonight, and there was a lot of concern. And Steve Anderson was asked point-blank if, and I've got it, if you want me to play it, but I think everybody's heard it, that if they had a specific need, if they could use TIF funds. And trustee Yereman asked him, well, if they have equipment that is outdated and they need to buy additional equipment, is that TIF-eligible? And he said, yes, absolutely. So we have that back then, where Steve had said it was, it was TIF-eligible. I read the opinion from the attorney, her letter, and I went back and I looked up a few things also. I've read, and I'm not an attorney, I'm just a guy who's been around for a while, and I can read and I can make my own decisions. And I think that's, that's what we're trying to do here, is decide if, because there's a lot of latitude in the statute about, about it's up to the village. And they talk about redevelopment, and they talk about such costs include without limitation to following, and there is a list. Training's not on that, but everybody agrees that training is something that's reimbursable through the TIF, although it's not within the document. It does, it does talk about reimbursing necessary to, within a tax and furtherance of the objectives of the redevelopment plan and project. And it also has in here that taxing districts, capital cost means those costs that taxing district for capital improvements that are found by municipal corporate authorities to be necessary and directly result from the redevelopment project. So it says that are found by the municipal corporate authorities to be necessary and directly result. So I thought to myself, maybe I just missed understanding what a capital cost is. So I went to the internet, and a lot of different sites said the same thing. They're known as CapEx and are used to acquire, upgrade, maintain physical assets such as property, plants, building, technology, or equipment. So I thought, well, let me go to the, let me go to the, let me go to the ultimate authority, and that's the IRS. And how do they, how do they define it? Capital cost provides that any, provides that capital expenditures include the cost of acquisition, construction, or erection of buildings, machinery and equipment, furnitures and fixtures, and similar property having a useful life substantially beyond the taxable year. So what he's requesting falls within capital cost, even though the letter from the attorney says they don't, they meet that, that definition. Also, based on the language that I read out of the statute, it's also, it also is based on that. So I, the problem I have with this is, is that this affects, and again, I've said this before, I think fire districts should be exempt from TIF because they are directly impacted by development within the TIF, because they have to protect that, that piece of property, right? So, and there's lots of examples within the TIF that this equipment that they're requesting to be reimbursed through TIF funds that are specific to the TIF, like attorney Anderson had stated when this was passed. They might not be exclusive to the TIF, but they don't have to be exclusive to the TIF according to when this was, when this was passed. So I did talk to the chief about this, and I've known the chief for well over 40 years. And I know that he just, he just doesn't do things on a whim, and he does his homework also. So I asked him, I said, well, what makes you think that these are TIF-eligible? And he said, I asked my attorney. And I said, and your attorney said they are? And he says, yeah. And I go, well, who's your attorney? He says, well, my attorney is the same attorney that represents a lot of fire districts. And he speaks at the Illinois Fire Services conferences all the time. And he had just, he had just had a conference at the last one, in September of '24, where he talked about TIF financing. And so I pulled his bio up, and his bio was municipal litigation practice experience includes annexation and boundary disputes, municipal consolidation, tax increment, financing issues, administrative review of pension and commission decisions. He routinely attends public board meetings as corporates or special counsel. And he's a senior partner of his firm. So I would think that his opinion would be a good opinion. His name is Sean Philattery, and he works for Odison, DeNofel, Hasenbog, and Casa Dalla. Well, that's the same firm that we received a letter from that says it's not TIF-eligible. So who, so, so who are we going to believe? We are going to believe, which attorney do we believe? And, and the board had great concerns about the TIF and how it was going to impact the fire department when it was passed, and relied heavily on what attorney Anderson said at that time. And I've known attorney Anderson for many years, too. And I, I put a lot of weight behind what he says also. So as I sit here and I look at this, I guess what I'm getting down to is, you know, if all attorneys agreed, we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need judges, right? Because there'd be, we wouldn't need courts, because the attorneys would just agree. So I look at this as our job to look at what we have available to us and to, and to determine, since the statute says it's up to the corporate authority to make that determination. And based on everything here and a preponderance of the evidence, it's my opinion that they're eligible for TIF reimbursement. And again, that's, that's my opinion. Our TIF attorney, you know, throughout the letter, said, in my opinion, in my opinion, that's great, I value people's opinions. But based on my research and my opinion, I believe it's TIF-eligible, and I believe that we have, that we have the authority to look at it and to make these determinations and determine if it's, if it's TIF-eligible or not. You know, you talk about working downstate. Like I said, you know, my ultimate goal is, if I could, I would get fire districts out of the TIF altogether. You know, the TIF to the west of Orchard, I voted against a portion of that, because that's going to affect the Sugar Grove Fire District. At the end of the day, they have to protect these properties. And if they don't have the funds to do it, and this is not a big ask either, this is a small ask as far as funds, it's just a disservice to them, and it snowballs, because if, if we build, if we allow these properties to be built, and if there's enough properties to be built, and then the ISO comes in and says, well, now you have so much commercial property, you need another ladder truck, because you've added these commercial products, $2.2 million. I know somebody who's just, I was just talking to somebody, they just bought a platform truck. You know, I remember when the fire department bought their first ones, it was half a million. And the trustees over there were like, I have a million, oh my God. $2.2 million for a platform truck. The problem is, if they say, well, we can't afford that, and we say, we can't help you buy it, then the ISO is going to reduce our rating. So when the ISO reduces our rating, what's that going to do? It's going to increase everybody's insurance costs within the TIF. So, you know, we've added more warehousing to the TIF, more trucking companies. They have items that require the foam to put them out. I mean, we have existing companies that require the foam. We have manufacturing companies that require this equipment to go potentially, you know, save someone's life or limb by removing them out of this machinery. So I believe, based on my research, I believe it's eligible. And again, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
And I would be, I would be in favor of.
And I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, and the work that you do and the research that you put into things, I'm not absent any other legal opinion, I'm not really willing to bet my own legal status on it for us to make a decision that we know is, I mean, we've been told by our people, not, you know, third-hand. If we had a letter from him, I think that does change things for me. But what I, I mean, what I would caution the board to is, and nobody is saying in any way whether or not this equipment is needed or not needed. It's whether or not it is legal and appropriate for us to pay out of this fund to that specific taxing body. And our team is saying that's not. It's not appropriate, and it's not legal. And we have other taxing bodies watching this meeting, or also in this meeting, who are watching us carefully as to how we react with TIF funds. Now, we've already agreed, and I wrote this down, I didn't say it earlier, we've, we've agreed to do something here that I think is exceedingly rare in a TIF project, is to rebate background growth, of which $180,000 has already been rebated back to the fire district over the life of this. And we know that likely went into, I don't know where it goes, I don't even want to speculate. All I know is that we tried to do everything we could do initially, whenever it was, 10 years ago, to make sure that we weren't harming our districts, specifically our fire district.
But it did harm the district. It took money out of their, out of their pocket. It has, it has, and again, I followed this before I was on the board. And, and I know the history of it. It has affected the operations of the fire district to the point that they cannot have a full-time department because of this TIF district. This was, it effectively took the only properties that had increment that was going to be available to them in the future and removed it from them. And I guess the best way I can explain this, and I know this isn't the case, but I'm just going to say hypothetically, let's say hypothetically the state could, could form a TIF district, right? So let's say the state says, you know what, I'm forming a TIF district, I use that money to widen Route 30, west of Orchard, and all the properties are going to be in the TIF district. TIF district. So you guys are gonna, and say they did this before we build a single house. So all the houses out there, you're going to get no, nothing from them for twenty-three years, but in twenty-three years, you're going to have a windfall. How would we service those houses out there for twenty-three years without that available funding? I mean, would you, you know, in your business, would you say, I'm not going to make any additional profit for the next twenty-three years of my business?
Right.
Your, your business would fail.
And I, and I value your opinion on that. I think you're arguing whether or not TIF is appropriate in this and kind of what we did to him. The, the request is to pay him out of our TIF, you know, proceeds, which made me think of something. We're also part of this TIF. We also, all of the new buildings, we provide our village services to that if there's any public road that goes in.
There is no public road, though. That, that's the thing, the roads are, the roads are there. And, and, and we have the one percent sales tax.
Right, we have other, we have other funding sources, for sure.
We have other funding sources.
But we also have police protection, we provide, so we're not like, totally unharmed in this, just think, just understand, like, we're not not in the TIF.
I understand that.
And I don't know what the fire district's funding sources look like. I don't, and again, I'm not debating any of that.
Well, we found that out when the TIF was established, and, you know, Minister Rosso even told me back in the time, is, well, you know, I did a FOIA, and I, I got their financial records, and, yeah, they're not in that good a shape. And, and, you know, and yet, it was like, oh, you know, whatever, they'll figure it out, they can just, every year they can just increase their levy, and we'll just keep charging, you know, the residents, basically, more money to protect those businesses in the TIF district. But to go back to what you said, so what you're saying is if you had a letter from another attorney that said this is TIF eligible, then we would be in a position to approve it?
No, that's just, I find that very interesting, and I would go back to our attorney. Our attorney is our team. I'd love to hear what the recollection of that is.
It wasn't, it wasn't this attorney who wrote the letter.
I know, and I'm not pointing to her. But the, the bigger thing is, we have a written letter from our attorney, we don't have anything from anybody else's attorney.
And that's fine.
So while I value your opinion, I gotta go with our attorney, and I'm not breaking the law.
Then we should go back to them and tell them we need an opinion from, from another attorney. Then, then what do we do? So then are we going to say, oh, we'll never, another attorney?
We can go down that road when we get there, but reality is, the advice I'm getting from our paid staff who's qualified in this is saying, don't do this, it's illegal.
Here's, here's what I think we should do. I got three things, and I'm going to make it short and sweet. One, we need to pay it out of our general fund. The people who are against us need to go back and watch that, that meeting and, and understand what we talked about. We, I asked specific questions, like Trustee Guyer said, of what was TIF eligible going forward or not. Had Attorney Anderson made different, had said it wasn't TIF eligible, it may have changed the creation of the TIF. I agree with what Trustee Guyer says, as far as I think the state should take the, the fire protection districts out of TIF, the effects of TIF. Once we pay out of the general fund, we need to continue to help all of our fire protection districts apply for grants, regardless of, of if they, if they can always find something to, to use that money for. During National Night Out, I went with Aurora Township, they're trying to get a thousand dollars for a fuel pump for one of their engines. And number three, we need to find a new TIF attorney. And at the next meeting, if I need to, I'll make a motion to terminate our, our TIF attorney. It's absolute crap. We need to go back, we need to watch the meeting and watch what we talked about. This, this has been outstanding since June. This is eight or nine months that we've been sitting on this and not, not getting this handled. That's bullshit.
Hey, quick update on the timeline. On August twenty-fourth, we reported back as a village that it's, it's illegal to do this, case closed. The reason we're here today is that a trustee asked us to add this back.
It's illegal in this attorney's opinion to do this.
And if you, do you have another attorney that says that it is legal?
I do, I have Attorney Anderson.
I don't think he would appreciate you quoting him, his legal advice in this meeting without written, and he doesn't work, either way.
Can we pull up the video?
We're getting way.
I've got it, you want me to play the video? Hold on a second. Let me, I'll play the video real quick, I have it right here. This is, this is public record now of the meeting.
I mean, I find that, based on some information Trustee Guyer shared, that Tom's attorney is from this firm, and we have two attorneys for the same firm conflicting in an opinion. Perhaps we need to go back to a partner of this firm and find out what's the truth. We have two different people that have opinions, so are opinions not valued? Which one's the law? Because again, it says that this doesn't fall into the redevelopment project costs, doesn't talk about the capital costs. This is a capital expense. When you're buying something that's a piece of equipment, that's a capital expenditure. When you're replacing a piece of, a consumable that's no longer valid, that's a capital expense. She says that it's not, it doesn't fall within the redevelopment. She specifically calls it out, not, not eligible under redevelopment. She doesn't talk about capital. So it's her definition of what this equipment is? Because this is, this is capital expenditure, it's not redevelopment. So I'd like to clarify between the conflict within their own firm, which is which?
Let's, let's not, my opinion would be not to spend a lot more staff time until we get a letter from, from their attorney that says, I've reviewed this, and I believe that. I still don't carry, that cannot carry as much weight for me because if we violate the TIF act, we're all liable here, regardless of whether his, anybody else's gray opinion, right? If it, if it came down to it, and there's other taxing bodies, why, so we got one suggestion that we pay it from the general fund. I'd love to hear what the rest of the board thinks.
So you have one taxing body requesting from another taxing body to supply equipment. I get the reason that taxing body is coming to us is because of a TIF that, that we developed, which inhibits their ability to recoup or to claim taxes, money. Because it affects public safety, I'm in support of covering this equipment because I don't want to be reactive. Just as we talk about Concord Drive and a stop sign, I don't want to be reactive when somebody gets hit by a car and gets killed on Concord Drive because our study doesn't say it is, we're going to react to it, let's be proactive. If something happens and this taxing body, this fire department does not have the equipment they need because of our TIF, we're going to be reactive and we will be responsible for that. So I am in favor of helping this department get those funds, whether it's our general fund, or if it's this grant money that we can secure. We know they're going to get this grant fund, so it's not coming out of that general fund, fine, so be it. But I also want to say, we have levy discussions, and we have, Trustee Youngerman, we're no levy, no levy, no levy, but there's going to be a point to where we do not levy, and we do not have those funds to this village in order to aid in this respect because we don't have the money. So there's a couple of things at play. Yes, I do support it, but we've got to also be, have the forethought to look, where are these funds going to be coming from? Are we going to be able to recoup these funds? And what are we going to do the next levy as well?
So, two things, I, I don't, again, same thing, and you'd said this earlier, nobody's saying that this equipment is bad and, and we don't agree with them buying this equipment. We're trying to find an avenue for funding. I put first and foremost is trying to find the state funding that's available for this that our state rep is looking into. That will take six more months, is what he said, the next cycle, because the last cycle was not applied for. If the board, because that's two for pay it out of the general fund, the sixty-seven thousand dollars, what do you say about the other taxing bodies? Then what do you tell Chief Waterman? I, I'm a member of the Oswego Fire Protection District, so now you're taking my tax levy that we've frozen for so many years and giving that to the fire district, to one fire district. We have five. They're, they might not show up at the meeting, but they will all be concerned about this and would love to get their share of our surplus.
Did we or did we not, when we did the Caterpillar TIF, help backdoor negotiate the developer to help the fire district with some equipment?
To get the equipment they needed.
We absolutely did that so that they could help offset their increment. That absolutely happened, it's a fact. Now, the fact that this tire company came in after we developed the TIF, it was a little dead horse was already out of the barn. And also not knowing that the foam was going to become loaded with PFOSes, and he could no longer use it because it's not, it's a cancer-causing agent.
Sure.
So it's, again, general health, they can't pump that stuff in it, it ends up in the water supply. So I don't understand why this, well, if we do for this, we got to do for this. We do for this and that all the time. We're putting road in out to Mulberry, down into the subdivision there. We're not doing that in all other communities. We closed Mayfield Drive for those residents. We didn't close Concord where we have a traffic problem concern. So we do for, on a regular basis. This is a fire district that came to us, and in all good faith, we sat here as a board, every board member, and three of us are still here, and questioned all of this, what can we do to limit the exposure to the fire district? If there's ever a need, ask. He asked. He asked a year ago, December. Now, we didn't hear from him until August, so that's when the clock starts ticking. But it's been since August. So I don't understand, we told him, ask. We don't want to do this on your back because it's a big, it's a big one, to Dan's point. Look at his fire district. Probably the largest square footage of his fire district is in this TIF. So I don't understand why there's so much resistance, and how do we explain it to this one or this one? We did it for Oswego Fire. We negotiated with that developer to meet with Oswego Fire to get that money for them.
So the developer gave their private funds to the fire district is different from us taking our tax dollars from twenty thousand residents, giving it to one district. I don't know that we've really done that before.
Well, no one says a TIF district has to last for twenty-three years either.
Right.
It can be dissolved whenever the village board decides that they want to dissolve it. So we can solve this problem by dissolving the TIF district if you want.
Sure, if that's what you want to do.
I mean, I, I.
Would save, would save John a bunch of time and heartache.
We want to build a, a road.
Just to remind everyone, we did issue bonds from this TIF district that we are obligated to.
We, we want to build a road that connects, what, Nell Road, that goes over a swamp, that's going to cost two million dollars out of this TIF district, which I've lobbied against. That's, that's not a good use of TIF funds. This, to me, is absolutely a TIF eligible expense. If it's not going to be paid out of the TIF, it needs to be paid out of the general fund. And at the next meeting, I promise you, I will make a motion to terminate our contract with this TIF attorney.
Sounds great. So where would you, Doug, where would you like the funding to come from?
If we, if we have to take it from the general fund, we'll take it from the general fund. Again, we sat here as a board and looked Tom in the eye, that we would do everything we could to not hurt them.
Yeah.
And since we're being told, and we don't want to, again, we're taking this TIF district, this TIF attorney's opinion, and read the opinion, read it. The only place where she says it's not eligible is redevelopment. She does not say a word about it being a capital expense. Why is that? If it wasn't available as a capital expense, why, she's an attorney, that would be in here. I believe that this is a capital expense, and I think we need to go back to her and ask the question specifically, and point out that, by the way, the other attorney in your firm says these are TIF eligible. Why don't you guys sit and have a cup of coffee at the coffee pot and figure out what's truth and what's not truth? That's where I would go, before I'd go to the general fund.
Okay, so before we quote an attorney who is like, third hand at this point, let's just not quote that attorney because I'm sure they don't appreciate that. Let's get a letter, get a letter. So do you want to pause on this? What's the majority here? Because, I mean, clearly, I'm in the minority of this. I, again, like I've said, I want to find a funding source for this, and I spent most of my day.
We paused for eight months.
I, we didn't, I spent most of my day trying to find a solution that didn't involve all of our taxpayers or us breaking the law. So what, what do you want to do? What does the majority feel like doing today?
Well, so, you know, we paid our TIF attorney five hundred dollars for this letter. And I will tell you, I said to the chief, well, well, she's got a letter. And he said, why would I pay five hundred thousand dollars for my attorney? He said, I talked to my attorney, my attorney told me. My attorney told me, if anybody asks you, you can tell them that this is my opinion, and you can share that with whoever you want. Tom's a very frugal guy.
I know.
He's not going to go out and spend five hundred dollars for a letter, but I guess if, if that's what you need, I guess we need to go back and say to Tom that, you know, we've been told that your attorney believes this is TIF eligible, our attorney believes it's not, and both attorneys work for the same firm, right? So we need to get this resolved through that, I guess, through that, through those, those two attorneys, or through that firm, or go to a whole different, and I will say, you're saying you, you know, the third hand and stuff. I, I will tell you also, I didn't get a letter, but I did talk to another attorney that is a TIF attorney. And I explained to him what the, what the letter said. And his response to me is, well, that's an interesting tactic to ta, to take, to not pay eligible funds out of a TIF.
And who is that attorney?
I'm not going to say because I, I said to him.
So you're using it as evidence, but you won't share with us who it is?
Yeah, I said to him, I said, off the record.
Yeah.
You know, can I just ask you a question? He told me. So, and he said, yes, as long as it's off the record. So I, I get it, you're, you're saying I'm, I'm not being honest about it, but I'm being honest about it. I wouldn't say something that didn't happen or wasn't said, right? No more than you would.
I don't doubt that.
No, no more than you would.
I have no reason to doubt that.
Right. So, you know, short of me, you know, retaining the guy's services, but I, and I will say this, too. I mean, I'm an old guy, I've, I've been in a lot of business ventures in my life, I've owned rental properties, I've owned businesses, I've worked for other companies, I've had a lot of dealings with attorneys. And I can tell you right now, whenever I've called an attorney with a problem, and I've told them the issue, the first words out of their mouth is, well, how do you want this to play? Well, I, I can make it happen. So, you know, I, I know, I know that there is some, some hard feelings from years ago when the chief came before the board and addressed the board. And I know a lot of people were not happy they did that in public. And I also know that he tried to not do that in public and play it out in a different way, and he had to come to public, and he didn't want to do that, to come to a public meeting and do it. He wanted to resolve the issue with the village, and unfortunately, that didn't happen. So the village called his bluff, he came to the meetings, and, and it became news, right? And I know there's people that weren't happy with that, and I believe that probably affects their decision-making to this day on certain issues when it comes to the fire department. And that's unfortunate. I would hope that that's not the case, but that, again, that's my personal opinion.
Sure.
That, that is, is what's happening. I think, I think that we need to find a way to, to make sure that this is legal, and again, we have, we have two different opinions, so we need to find a judge.
Well, we have one opinion.
No, well, yes.
We have our opinion.
Exactly. And we have his attorney's opinion. I mean, so do you want, do you want him to come?
We would like that.
Yeah, do you want him to come before the board and tell you his attorney?
His attorney, sure.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Or do we spend more money going back to our attorney and ask them if they can talk to an attorney that was quoted in our meeting?
Okay, so.
How do we do this? What do you want to do?
Well, so that's why I'm asking you. So if he gets a letter from his attorney that says, these are TIF eligible, then we're good to go, right? Because his attorney is his senior partner?
Okay, so, so it's two attorneys within the same law firm, who's our contract with? The attorney or the law firm?
Well, so this attorney.
They also don't have that letter.
Okay, we, we don't have that letter, but we have two attorneys within a law firm. Who is our contract with? The law firm or the attorney?
I don't know how that works.
Well, so this has been our TIF attorney for years, who has recently joined this law firm. I did, I did my research. So this attorney has recently joined this law firm. So this is attorney from the outside coming in to this law firm. So we did not retain the law firm. We've been working with this attorney and following this attorney as this attorney has been, has been changing law firms, right?
Good. So, so it sounds like you would like to wait and not make a decision until we get a letter from their attorney?
Right, I would, yeah, because, like I said at the beginning, if all attorneys agreed, we wouldn't need judges. So who's going to be the judge of this? The way, the way that I read the statute, the statute says, we are the judges of what is, is TIF eligible, right?
Again, this is the same kind of thing that we talk about when we lobby for, so you would like to wait and get a letter. You three down here, what would you like to do?
I'd like to fire the attorney.
I, in my opinion, I feel it's a capital expense, and, and the attorney did not address that in her letter.
So you would like to pay it out of the TIF?
Yeah.
Or general fund? We need, we, staff just needs a direction.
I think it's TIF eligible. I. Again, I think, I question the attorney's opinion. Because, again, never did she address the capital expenditure. It was only the redevelopment.
So you would like to use TIF funds, Ben?
So if we have a letter, a legal letter saying that it's not eligible from the TIF, then I'm going with that because I don't want to open this up to a lawsuit from another taxing body.
And again, you know, I don't necessarily want to wait, I want to pay the money out of the TIF. And again, I'll read it. It says, "Taxing districts' capital costs means those costs of taxing districts for capital improvements that are found by the municipal corporate authorities to be necessary and directly result from the redevelopment project." And there's been a lot of redevelopment projects out there. And, you know, this whole thing of, well, they can use the equipment someplace other than within that TIF. Well, then they just might as well take it out, that they just might as well put in. Fire districts cannot be reimbursed for any equipment within a TIF because short from them buying a fire truck and parking it on the property of a business. I mean, you could use that, you could use that argument to say, "No reimbursement." Nothing is reimbursable, right?
I appreciate, it's an extreme example, but I get it. So you don't want to wait, but you also want to fund it out of the TIF?
Yeah, I want to find a way to fund it out of the TIF. I believe, I believe that we are well within our rights based on what I've read and on my research, that this is a TIF-eligible, reimbursable expense. I don't have a problem with it. So, but, I would love, yeah, I would love to, to hear another. And again, like I said, two attorneys agree, we wouldn't need judges. I don't want to go, have to go to a judge because like trustee Brzezaska said, you know, they could, you know, another district could seek a legal action. Well, at the end of the day, Montgomery Fire Department could seek a legal action. They can say, "I made a request to a TIF, my attorney says it's TIF-eligible." They're saying, their attorney says, "No, let's go, let's go let a judge decide this." And now, now, now where are we at? Now we're in front of a judge and we're going down a road that none of us want to go down, right?
I'm not even qualified to comment on, to respond to that. I don't think any of us are. We're not attorneys, we're not, that's not what we do.
But I mean, that's what I'm saying, we don't want to go down that avenue.
True.
Right? So I don't want to set us up for any type of legal action either.
So before I go to you, I have one question for Jen. Is, we're about to rebate $38,000 to the fire district.
Yes, that's an estimated amount.
Okay, let's say, so that in total is almost half a million dollars. Can we afford to increase that this year? So we don't break the law and still accomplish the goal?
I would have to go back and look at those financials.
Yeah, and see, that's my concern in this whole discussion. I'm not weighing in on whether it's eligible or not because I can't tell you that. The part of the attorney's letter we have that concerns me is that we can't rebate to one district. We would have to rebate proportionally to all of them, which would be the $850,000. And the TIF would have trouble handling that with the other things we need to do. So I would prefer we use the general fund. Because I just, whether or not it's eligible, I just don't think we can afford to rebate it to everybody without crippling the TIF. That's the concern.
That makes sense. Now, $65,000 is a significant amount of money. And we're just saying, pay it out of the general fund. I mean, I said that initially, let's pay it out. What does that, what does that look like? What gets pushed onto the back burner? What's not going to happen as a result of paying $65,000 out of the general fund?
That's when I would reach out to Director Wolf and Director Smith, or Chief Smith, and ask them to look at their budgets and see if they can identify any of those items because those are the larger portions of the budget and maybe have a little more flexibility than some of the other departments. So I would need to go back and work with staff in order to do that.
Thank you. Sorry to cut you off. The frustrating part to me is that there is funding for this type of thing in Springfield. We have high taxes here in Illinois that Steve talks about all the time, that we've paid into a fund for this use. This was an unfunded mandate came down from the feds. And we're glossing over the fact that the money is already down there and we should just be going to get it. I don't want staff to be writing grants for every taxing body, but in this situation, we have and we will offer to write the grant application, right? Get it down there, get it in Representative Hanson's hands so that he can present it.
Let's get representatives not to vote for unfunded mandates, number one. And then recommend us to go get our own tax money because they voted for an unfunded mandate.
Well, you know what? And I do agree with not using the PFOS. Because we've, as we've seen, that is a contaminant, it contaminates your site, it contaminates our drinking water and all that. I'm not, again, we're not saying this is not needed. I'm not qualified to say that.
Well, so I will say one other thing too.
Where did the foam come from the first time? Was that? Where did the foam come from the first time?
It was donated by VVF. VVF is not in the village, VVF is no longer there. But when VVF was in production, we had a fire at VVF. And it was in the grease, they bring in fat basically on rail cars. And there was a spill, there was ignition, and it took untold amounts of water and time to put that fire out.
So do you know if the fire chief went back there and?
So the fire chief went to VVF and said, "Listen, if you want me to adequately protect your property, I need foam, and I don't have the money to buy foam." And they said, "Well, you know what? We're going to buy you foam, and we're going to buy you a foam trailer." And they equipped them to, to fight the fires at VVF. Well, VVF is no longer in business, they're gone, they don't do that type of production there anymore. And like trustee Marisak said, unfortunately, the foam back then, you know, remember asbestos, that used to be the, you know, the best thing ever invented. You don't know at the time, but we know now. But what I was going to say is, is, you know, Chief Myers has a degree. He has a degree, multiple degrees. He's on multiple boards, he teaches. He is, he is not some hick fire chief out in the middle of nowhere. He goes after grants continuously, because I had this conversation with him too. I said, "Well, isn't there grants?" And he goes, "I, I apply for every grant I can apply for every year." So he's, he's applied for the grant. So I appreciate that we could give him some type of assistance and maybe we could have some, you know, political clout, I don't know. But he does go after those grants. So it's not like he's not trying to help his own situation, he is.
He did indicate that five years ago, he got this grant.
Right. But I, and I'll say one more thing and then I'll, and then I'll quit talking, is, this is the part that gets me the most about anything, just life in general. And is, is when a decision is made or commitment is made to somebody based on conversation, that should be honored. And back when this TIF was established, again, there was a lot of conversation. Our attorney at the time said that such a request from the fire department would be TIF-eligible. And it's a matter of record, it's, it's, you know, you can watch, go back and watch the meetings. And the village board voted for it and made a commitment to the fire district that if they had a need within this TIF to come back to the board and the board would honor that request as long as it fell within the statute, which it does, and would reimburse them for TIF-eligible expenses. And I guess that's right where I'm at with the rub of this whole thing. Is we made a commitment, we need to find a way to honor that commitment. And we'll never make them whole because, you know, you said they're going to get $38,000. And I'm sure Director Maluski doesn't have this number at our fingertips. But I would like to know how much money the fire district has not received because of this TIF. And so if they're getting $38,000 this year, how long has the TIF been in existence? Now, 10 years? No, we're further along than that, aren't we, than 10 years? So, I mean, you just take 30, so, you know, I bet you there are half a million dollars out, easy, easy. Without, probably more than that, right, probably, I don't know.
All right, so I need a little direction for staff.
Sure.
Are we waiting for a letter? Are we funding, are we putting an ordinance on for next meeting to rebate from the TIF funds just to the fire district? Or are we going to put an ordinance on next time to grant this via the general fund? Staff needs direction, or we could talk about it forever.
So you're saying, have the chief get a letter from his attorney, the senior partner of this law firm, to say that this is TIF-eligible? Or from any attorney, I guess, and bring that back to the board, and then we'll go on that letter?
I would like to see that letter, I'm not, I'm not sure what I'd do with it.
Well, I mean, you're asking us to make decisions, so I'm just asking you that. So if you get a letter that says, "On behalf of the Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District, I have reviewed their request, and in accordance with the TIF, I believe that this is a TIF-eligible expense and should be, should be paid to the fire district." You're going to be good with that.
You know, if we got that letter from our attorney, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So yes, I would really like to see a letter like that, from a qualified TIF person, for sure. That would be very helpful to me. I don't get to vote either way, it's just you all.
We do if it's a tie.
Again, I would look to save the chief some money because, again, whether or not he says it's TIF-eligible, really prefer not to pay it from the TIF because of the other implications.
But we can't, if there are TIF redevelopment expenses that are allowable under the TIF, you can rebate that back to one district. Is my understanding.
That's how it's been told to me, I don't know. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
For capital expenditure.
That's fine. We just can't afford to pay all the districts their proportional share. So that's my concern.
That's not what we're talking about, proportional share. We're talking about, this is a TIF-eligible expense. And if another district comes forward with a TIF-eligible expense, we would have to, we would have to look at that and see if it's a TIF-eligible expense. Again, the problem is, is the fire districts are the most impacted by this. It's not going to be the school district, it's not going to be the library district, it's not going to be the park district. You know, there's no parks in this TIF area, there's no schools, there's no children.
Yeah. So you'll work on a letter, what do we do in the meanwhile? Matt, Steve, Doug, what would you like to do?
I think we have to hold. I think we have to hold pending, you know, if Tom can get this letter and if it's truly from the same firm that our attorney is with, let them, let them figure it out and hash it out.
I totally agree, if that's the case, we got to figure that out. But pause?
Then I think we need to pause because, again, I don't want to, I think it's a TIF-eligible expense. I truly feel that it's a TIF-eligible expense. In reading her letter, she kind of skirts around that it's not a cap. She didn't call it, she said it's not eligible because it's capital for redevelopment. So I think it's TIF-eligible, so I'd rather see the funds come from there.
And like I said, I have respect for all of you in your opinion and the homework that you do. We'll get, we'll see if we get a letter from attorney and pause until then. All right, anything else on the topic?
I still think we need a new TIF attorney.
Okay. I don't want to cut you off.
Well, yeah, he's probably right, especially if it's the same attorney that represents the fire district within that TIF. And the fire district's had this attorney for 20 or 25 years.
We'll get the letter and we'll figure out the attorney thing after that.
All right, moving on, I already did, unless the two bathroom breakers have any newer unfinished. Went through that stuff.
No.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.